Good evening, everyone. We're calling the February 27, 2020 Public Hearing Sessions for the Planning Board to And so, do we have a roll call?
Yeah, a roll call.
Oh, your call.
Uh, Member Burr?
Present.
Member Long, absent. Member Zuccarelli?
Present.
Member Blaney?
Present.
Secretary Keith, absent. Vice Chair Finnerty, present. Chair?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Can you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a few words of safety and precaution. The exits are two doors out here, down the stairs and out the front door in case of an emergency. We have a sign-in sheet if you want to speak. They've all been collected with your names and who you represent. And so, I will call you to come and talk after the application is presented by the applicant's representative or the applicant. So it's pretty straightforward. So you don't have to, they don't have to sign anything anymore. Okay? So the first application is the Hamlet of Watermill.
We have noticed, Madam Chair.
We have noticed, and let Dennis read.
Oh, you're gonna read them?
You'll go next.
Start them off. Okay.
Please take notice in accordance with the Town Code of the Town of Southampton. A public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, February 27, 2020, at 6:00 PM prevailing time at the Southampton Town Hall, 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, to consider the pre-application entitled BBH Co., BH680 LLC. This pre-application consists of a two-lot standard plan where proposed Lot 1 is to contain 87,120 square feet, and proposed Lot 2 is to undersize and to contain 43,382 square feet, and is to contain the existing improvements with the intent to preserve the existing home via landmarking and obtaining variances from the ZBA located in the CR-80 zoning district, the aquifer protection overlay district, and within the ag overlay district situated in 680 Scuttle Hole Road, tax map 967-1-6.5.
Mr. Marsinsuk?
Good evening, Board members. For the applicant, Robert Marsinsuk, O'Shea Marsinsuk and Bruin, 250 North, uh, 250 North Sea Road, Southampton. Subject parcel is located at the northwest corner of Scuttle Hole Road and Holsey Cook Lane in Watermill. It is shown as parcel number two on the map of the second revision to the minor subdivision for Simone Di Corellis, which was approved on December 16, 1982, as Minor Subdivision Map Number 667. Premises are comprised of just under three acres, located in the CR-80 zoning district, and, as the notice indicated, they are located in the agricultural overlay and aquifer protection overlay districts. There are public utilities available along both Scuttle Hole and Holsey Cook Lane. The parcel is serviced by private water. There is a fire hydrant that exists on Hay Ground Road, which is approximately 1,000 feet to the east of the subject premises. The property is currently improved with an existing two-story, single-family dwelling, which was constructed in and around 1911, which is commonly known as the Marin Young Corellis House. As a result of an application that was filed by the applicant, the Southampton Town Landmarks and Historic Districts Boards determine that this house is eligible for landmark status. The report from the Landmarks and Historic Districts Board was made part of the application, and you should have it in your packet. This is basically an application for standard yield map for, uh, standard yield plan for two lots in order to preserve that house on the subject property as a historical landmark. Lot 1 is comprised, uh, proposed to be comprised of 87,120 square feet, is conforming under the CR-80 zoning district, and has over 330 linear feet of road frontage on Scuttle Hole Road. Lot 2, uh, which is the lot with the dwelling on it, consists of 43,382 square foot, square feet, is therefore non-conforming and has approximately 230 feet of road frontage along Scuttle Hole Road and about 130 feet of road frontage on Holsey Cook Lane. The applicant requires, therefore, since we have a non-conforming lot, that's the lot area, we require a variance in order to obtain subdivision approval. We have submitted a variance application to the Zoning Board of Appeals in this matter, and as of this date, a hearing on that application has not been scheduled. The applicant is willing and proposes to designate the dwelling on the premises as a historic landmark, though, as a condition of receiving subdivision approval and variances from the zoning board for the undersized lot. Under the density incentive provisions of the Town Code, specifically Section 330-9, a second dwelling can be constructed on that parcel in exchange for the preservation of an existing dwelling that is landmarked eligible. This same section of the Town Code also provides that the Planning Board can approve the subdivision of two undersized lots where development rights are being transferred onto the property, which we are not doing, just for the record. However, um, the density incentive provisions of the Town Code don't allow for the creation of an undersized lot for the preservation of a dwelling that is landmark eligible. However, under Section 330-167J of the Town Code, the zoning board may grant a variance to protect and preserve historic or culturally significant structures that meet the definition of a historic landmark, as determined by the Town's Landmark and Historic Districts Board, which is the reason why the applicant made application to the, to the zoning board pursuant to Section 330-167J, to obtain the necessary lot area and setbacks, variances, if any, um, in connection with, uh, this application. As we indicated earlier, if the applicant is successful in obtaining the variances from the zoning board and approval from the Planning Board for the subdivision, the applicant will designate the dwelling on the premises as a town historic landmark. Okay? Lastly, given the size configuration and lack of continuous, meticulous, excuse me, open space, we're also asking for a waiver of the submission of a cluster alternative plan in this matter. And that's basically all I have to say.
I have a question.
Sure.
You referenced 339, I think, which is...
330...
339, which is essentially a quid pro quo.
330-9, right, okay.
Which is essentially a quid pro quo. They'll give the house to the town as a historically preserved building?
Right.
For permission to build a second house on the other...
Right, on the same lot. We're not really proposing on the same lot, though.
No, I know, but then we'll subdivide that lot.
Yes, 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 exactly.
I understand.
Exactly, that's correct, yeah.
And the, can you just give us a physical description of Lot 1?
Pardon me?
Physical description of Lot 1. Is it a field? Is it in cultivation?
Lot 1 is basically just wooded.
Just wooded?
Yes. It's not being used as, you know, farmland.
Doesn't look like it's...
It must just...
Doesn't look very wooded. Yeah, it's hard to tell from...
Trees, trees, grasses. It's basically not being used in agricultural production. Essentially just, uh, probably a succession field with some trees.
Right. It's in the agricultural overlay district?
Right.
And the APOD, the aquifer protection overlay district?
Right.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, we have, thanks, we have...
Good, thank you.
Tip Bruin, please.
Good evening. My name is Tip Bruin. I'm the owner of 99, excuse me, I have a tremor in my voice. It's not because I'm upset. We live here, adjacent to this property. I'm the owner of 99 Cooks Lane in Watermill, a two-acre parcel, which I purchased in about 1980, when this 70-acre farm was subdivided into four parcels, including the one that's in contention. Ours was part of that. My wife, Grania, and I have lived there full-time for the past 23 years. The field, it's in question, by the way, is, has been used for agriculture. It isn't being used now for agriculture. It may have some wild Russian olives in it, but it's not a wooded lot, more like a meadow. And of course, the area up here and over here on the Snawski property is in the land bank or preserved farmland. Suffolk County bought those development rights from the natives. So it's near, but not exactly adjacent to other preserved land. During the time we have watched, excuse me, during this time of our living out here full-time and before, we've watched the East End become less and less like the beautiful farm and woodland that it had been when we first visited back in the 60s and 70s. From the beginning, we didn't want to contribute to the endless developments, so we purchased an existing small house and renovated it. Our house was the farm worker's house for this 70-acre farm, and we have on our two acres, the barn that was built probably 100 years ago. To the point, if possible, we would like the property in question to stay undeveloped. Our reasoning is as follows. Our property is zoned for two acres, as has been pointed out, as is this property. If it's split the way is, as proposed, the main house would be on one acre, I believe, which would appear to run counter to the town's desire for planning purposes. Given the closeness of preserved farmland, the property, excuse me, should be a prime candidate for purchase by the Community Preservation Fund. If the Planning Board were to approve the proposed subdivision, we would recommend that, instead of putting a house on the property with the additional traffic on an already very busy Scuttle Hole Road and more demands on town services, the two-acre parcel should be bought by the Community Preservation Fund. And I have informed the woman in charge of the CPF of this possibility. It's up to her whether she does anything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Tip. Is there someone else who'd like to speak to this application?
Motion to close with a 10-day?
Okay. No one on the board either?
No.
No other questions? Okay, motion to close with a 10-day written common period?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, abstention six in favor, two absent, uh, five in favor, two absent. Thank you. And any other, any other correspondence can be entered into the record within 10 days. Long Island, number two, the Long Island Automobile Collectors LLC?
We have noticed.
We have noticed.
Oh, you got the, uh, the read?
Phil, I'll give that to Phil to read. Take this to share.
Please take notice that in accordance with the Town Code of the Town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board, Thursday, February 27, 2020, at 6:00 PM prevailing time, and the Southampton, at the Town, at the Southampton Town Hall at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, to consider the site plan application entitled LI Automobile Collectors LLC. The site plan application is to construct a 5,560-square-foot building, two-story, and the reconstruction of a, geez, 8,000-square-foot storage building to be used for storage of clean, portable toilets inside three total buildings on a seven-and-four-tenths-acre parcel, also improved with four other storage buildings, two to be demolished, located in the HB and R20 zoning district at 315 County Road 39, Hampton North Sea, Suffolk County tax map number 900-131-1-71. By order of the Planning Board, the Town of Southampton, Philip Keith, Secretary.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Marsinsuk, you're representing the applicant?
Yes, good evening again, Robert Marsinsuk, O'Shea Marsinsuk and Bruin, 250 North Sea Road for the applicant. Subject property is located on the north side of County Road 39, east of Sandy Hollow Road, just to the east of the intersection of Sandy Hollow Road and County Road 39. It is comprised of approximately 8.4 acres. It has two tax maps associated with it because it's basically located in two different school zones. It's located in the Tuckahoe School District as well as the Southampton School District. It's also a split-zone parcel. Approximately 6.3 acres in the northern portion of the property are located in the R20 zoning district. The remaining 2.1 acres located in the southerly portion along County Road 39 are zoned highway business. Property was once the site of the Long Island Automotive Museum, which was established by Austin Clark in and around 1948. Remnants of the old auto museum building are still located in what is now the HB portion of the, uh, the property, which is that building right there. And the restoration of that building is being incorporated into our site plan application. In addition to that building, the property is also improved with four smaller, smaller storage buildings, each of which range in size from approximately 2,600 to 3,700 square feet. Those four storage buildings are on the northerly portion of the property. They have benefit of a pre-existing CO for an auto museum use, and were given a variance by the Zoning Board of Appeals for a change of one non-conforming use to another, specifically the change was from the storage buildings associated with an auto museum use, um, to the storage of portable toilets and associated materials and items in connection with the portable toilet rental and leasing business that the applicant intends to operate in the HB portion of the property. The Zoning Board of Appeals also granted the applicant a permit, a variance, I'm sorry, to permit the extension of the highway zone, an additional 50 feet into the R20 zoning district. The principal of the Long Island Automobile Collectors is Emil Skip Norsec, who owns and operates Norsec and Son. They currently maintain an office building and portable toilet rental business on property which is located at 1625 County Road 39, which is several miles to the west of this proposed site. Purpose of this application is to essentially move all of the operations from 1625 County Road 39 to here, so that basically, this will become an office building, the new corporate headquarters of the, uh, of the Norsec portable toilet business, as well as the solid waste processing facility, which is located just adjacent and to the north. We intend to utilize two of the pre-existing storage structures, which are located in the R20 portion of the, the property, um, in connection with the portable toilet business on the HB portion of the property. The other two storage buildings, we intend to demolish and remove. As I indicated earlier, we also intend to restore the old auto museum, um, building and use it for storage as well. In addition to myself, we also have Vin Guardiello from the Rayner Group, who will briefly talk about the site plan elements, and, I don't know, Randy Croxton from Croxton Collaborative Architects, to discuss the proposed design. Is, here any estimate of his arrival?
Traffic.
Traffic. Well, hopefully he'll, by the time Vin is done, he'll be here. If not, perhaps we can, I don't know, perhaps second call for, for his presentation?
I have a question?
Sure.
Of you. When the Zoning Board of Appeals granted a variance from one non-conforming use to another, did they take into consideration that the museum originally housed automobiles, historic automobiles, and it was now going to house portable toilets?
Yes, that was made expressly known to them.
And by then, according to them, this was still a museum?
I don't understand the question.
It fit the definition of museum, is my question.
Uh, that wasn't really an issue. I mean, an issue was the pre-existing CO, which was before them, which the building inspector issued with, which said simply automotive, uh, auto museum, which was taken to mean that those storage buildings were used in connection with an auto museum for the storage of old cars and parts and things associated and used in connection with the auto museum. That is what was before the zoning board, that CO. The application was to change that, since that, the auto museum did not operate there anymore. They were told that what was going to, what was planned to be used there was a, a use associated with the storage and leasing of portable toilets, which is a permitted use in the HB zoning district. And, um, evidence was presented, in our opinion, that it was a better use than what was there because essentially you had some issues, potential issues with oil and other, let's say contaminants that might leak out of old automobiles into the ground, whereas we were proposing to store nothing more than clean, um, plastic porta-pots. So they determined, I would assume, that, uh, that this was a better use.
So there was nothing in the presentation that you made in front of the ZBA about housing any kind of museum quality, anything?
No.
Nothing?
As far as our application?
Yeah.
We were going to house there?
No, nothing. One or two pieces?
No, we never proposed to store, not to the best of my recollection, store any sort of...
Because it's my recollection that when this application first came before us, that there was some conversation about that.
I think you're talking about some old cars that we were planning to put in the old auto museum property.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about these pre-existing...
No, 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 no.
I'm sorry.
No, no.
All right.
No.
Never mind, yes, and I will re... But again, this building was not part of our application before the Zoning Board of Appeals because this is in the HB zone. These are not. So the application before the zoning board concerned the storage buildings, not that building. So again, there was nothing spoken about before the zoning board about what was going to go on with that building, because again, it wasn't part of the application, didn't have to be.
Okay, I, I, so I wasn't so crazy in remembering that.
No, sorry, I misunderstood the question.
Okay, so you mentioned the other Norsec property, which is west on County Road 39?
It's located literally, right there.
So will that be closed and everything is moving to this property, the offices?
Oh, I'm, again, I'm, I thought you meant, again, I'm, all right, yes, at 16, what is the address? 1625 County Road 39, which is up...
Up west.
Past, I don't know, past Nugent and Potter a little bit and something in that area.
Yes, exactly.
Yes, so that facility will essentially be moved here.
Okay.
Everything that's going on there will be now deducted on this property.
Okay, those are my questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, are there any questions here?
I mean, I also have Vin Guardiello.
Kelly, I have two people, I have Vincent Guardiello and Kelly.
Oh, I'm just beginning to see him.
Okay, so Vincent Guardiello of the Rayner Group, you're part of the application?
Yes. I was told to sign it.
You did?
Yes.
Your name is right here.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
My name is Vincent Guardiello. I'm a principal with the Rayner Group, and we are, been retained by the applicant to serve as the civil engineers and land surveyors for the project. Just to kind of give you some background about the site layout, we are proposing two accesses to the facility, one from County Road 39, the other from Sandy Hollow Road. Those locations, in essence, are within close proximity to existing accesses to the site. Those two accesses are unimproved at this point, and we intend to improve them in a manner that would meet the standards of the Suffolk County Department of Public Works, who has jurisdictions over those right-of-ways. We have subsequently met with the DPW, have gone over the standards of design, and are in the process of making formal applications with respect to those curb cuts. The site layout provides for a total of 49 parking spaces. Of those 49 spaces, 11 are land bank spaces. The 49 spaces ultimately demonstrate conformance to the design standards and the parking requirements for the project. The facility provides for proposed utility connections, public water, gas, electric. We will have onsite sanitary facilities that would conform to the standards of the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. With respect to the development of the parking areas, we are proposing a porous concrete surface. So in essence, the drainage for the site goes through a, basically through the gaps or voids within the concrete into a subsurface drainage layer, and along those lines, what that does is reduces the amount of runoff, number one, and number two, reduces the amount of stormwater containment with respect to subsurface drainage structures that are needed. The design of the site has been before the town engineer. They have commented, provided a few comments. We are in the process of addressing all their comments, and see no reason why we cannot meet their comments and the standards of the code. Beyond that, I think Mr. Marsinsuk has identified there are several buildings and what those uses are. Two-story office building, the former museum building, which is located in this location, would be used for storage. The intent there is to more or less take what is currently being stored outside in the Norsec operations and move it indoors to more or less, you know, store them in the more of the inclement months. Beyond that, should the board have any questions about the site layout or the site plan, I'd be glad to respond to that.
I have a question about the, um, the informal roadway that's been established between the edge of your R20 road all the way to the other Norsec site. Can you speak to that? Because that's, it shows up as a, as sort of an informal, not specified roadway to the north.
Um, the, the intent with making the connection between this property to the north of this site, there is no intentions to have that as a functioning roadway. I believe when ownership was taken over by Mr. Norsec, the intent was to clean up the property. There was a bunch of derelict items on the property, junk cars, vehicles, et cetera, in which that was used to kind of clean up the site. We identify that on our plan, but again, there is no formal proposal to make that connection between the two, two parcels.
So it will be used, you're saying?
Exactly.
Okay, that's, that clarifies it.
One thing I also forgot to mention, and I don't mean to cut you off, is we are proposing a cross-access with this property to the west. a cross-access with this property to the west.
And which property is that?
It's the Monument.
Monument place?
Yes.
So cross-access from your site? And what, do they have a curb cut onto?
They have a very odd curb cut.
52?
Part of that coordination had to do with meeting with DPW. In fact, as I had mentioned before, we had met in the field with DPW, which included both our neighbors, as a means of trying to come up with the best plan to take access off 39, and basically that's where we are right now.
So they won't, they'll close their access?
I don't know specifically, but we are making that offer of dedication.
You see, right now, that monument place cannot easily head westbound on 39.
Exactly.
Because if they exit Sandy Hollow, they got the barrier.
Yeah.
And they can't.
Have to go north.
So this will allow them to, I guess, go through your property.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then use your exit onto Sandy Hollow?
Or 39.
Or 39.
More or less, Jack, to come in and make this.
Oh, common driveway.
Because what happens is they're too close down in here. There's an island that you really can't see in there.
Yeah.
It's a strange configuration.
Yeah, well said.
That's bitter planning. Okay. I don't have any more questions. Is anyone on the board? Does anyone else want to speak to this application? Yes, please. And your name is?
Randolph Croxton, Croxton Collaborative Architects. Do you want me to sign?
I have it here. C-R-A-X-T-O-N?
C-R-O-X-T-O-N.
Okay.
And I'm the architect, Croxton Collaborative Architects, retained by Norseic for the office building. And the organization on the site and the various elements, I think, reflect the fact that this is, because a lot of people are concerned about it, and we were concerned about traffic, access density, and so forth. The project, as mentioned, is land banking the maximum of cars. There's been a very strong interest in sustainability, both on issues of the site, there was already the mention of the porous concrete, getting the bioremediation effect of that, rain gardens on the site. So issues of stormwater and stormwater quality have been integrated. The building itself will be lead platinum, which is the highest rating.
That's the top, the top.
The building is located here.
That's your architecture, right up there?
I'm sorry? Yes, well, this is, this is a sketch, but I'll give you, we'll take a quick look here at the one elevation, which... So this would be the view from the street. And you have every occupiable square foot in the building is daylit. The roof, there's a green roof, and an ability to capture rainfall and to get maximum transvaporation of that water back into the atmosphere. We have, the platinum rating has enormously high performance in terms of materials, clean materials, energy efficiency, and as I mentioned, it's a fully daylit space. The population, it's not a high public interface use, so it's basically an operational, excuse me, operational center, which, which will have up to, currently starting out at just 12, but going up to maybe 18, 20 people. So it's a low population, low impact overall, and we've looked at all of the elements to essentially accentuate that. You can see from the approach, the museum beyond, so there's a restoration of the original bright blue, to say the least, color of that entry facade. And there would be a, the incorporation of a couple of the sort of original trucks going all the way back to the 30s. That would be part of the history of that, of Norseic and of the use on the site.
Good. Glad it's, no solar on this, right?
There is renewable, let's see. Once you get up to the roof level, there's a trellis that comes off of the elevator, and so we do have renewable there. We do have solar. But the most important solar, most people are not aware of this, but the strongest use of solar, the most efficient use of solar energy, renewable, is to have all of your lighting, as we've done in this case, so that it senses the presence of natural light. And all of the electrical lighting is dimmed off and down when, in the presence of natural light. And this during business hours throughout the entire year, the space will be predominantly naturally lit.
How will it be heated and cooled?
The mechanical, it's, we're using a refrigerant, variable volume refrigerant system. It's a highly responsive system that doesn't run all hot or all cold. It can produce just the amount of heating and cooling that's needed anywhere within the space. And that system is, all of the equipment is located adjoining the elevator. You see right here, all mechanical equipment is located, shielded.
What runs that system?
That's a combination of electric and then...
It's kind of like a heat pump, a fancy version?
Yes, exactly. Yes, exactly. A very high, high-order heat pump.
So the solar could help offset the electric?
Yes, no, it feeds right into the base load, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Beautiful.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this application? If not, we'll entertain a 10-day written comment period? I'm sorry. Did you want to say anything more?
No, I have nothing else. I would just stand there and see if you've got any other questions. Apparently not.
No, apparently not. 10-day written comment period. Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria. All in favor? Posed extensions? Five in favor, two absent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three, Loews &amp; Fishes.
We have notice, Madam Chair.
We have notice.
Notice of a pre-submission conference. Please take notice that in accordance with the town code of the town of Southampton, a pre-submission conference will be held at the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, February 27, 2020, at 6:00 PM prevailing time, at the Southampton Town Hall at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, to consider the pre-application entitled Loews &amp; Fishes Cafe. The subject project is for the site plan application to construct a residence with four affordable apartments and a single-family residence with cross-access to the east on a 12-acre parcel situated in the HO zoning district located at 2252 Montalk Highway, Hamlet of Bridgehampton. Suffolk County tax map number is 900-69-2-177, by order of the Planning Board of the Town of Southampton, Philip Keith, Secretary.
Thank you. It's tricky.
This is the first test.
Okay.
Good evening.
Attorney for the applicant?
I am, Eric Bregman, at Eric Bregman, P L L C, 10 Gingerbread Lane, in the other place, East Hampton. This is an application for the Loews &amp; Fishes Cafe, as mentioned in the notice, for senior apartments above it and a single-family residence on the property. The design, which is... This is slightly different than what's there. Their colors are a little different.
If you, there are mics, okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah. Yeah, I was just going to say there are mics here.
You just have to speak into that mic. No, no.
You can stay there, just, you have to go back to the mic.
So you can see how it's integrated with the inn that is over here. This is the Bridgehampton Inn. This is the Loews &amp; Fishes Cook Shop, and this is the cafe. Obviously, the idea is to have a harmonious integrated design. This is along Butter Lane. The difference between that is there's some blue coloring in here on the windows, but the design is the same. It meets all zoning, except for there's some very small variances. I can, I have a survey that I can show you. They're tiny, if you'd like to do that. You're asking for a setback of, that is, these tiny little crosshatched pieces that don't quite meet the setback.
Mr. Bregman, they're asking you to speak into the microphone.
One of them is 10 square feet, one of them is 25 square feet, one of them is 8 square feet. Up here, there are, these don't, they're all extensions, don't meet the setback. One of them is 12, it's 3 feet wide, 44 square feet, this one's 4 feet wide, and 74 square feet.
So are these pathways into the property, or?
No, they're, they're really design elements. They make it much more attractive as entrances. They're both entrances and exits.
Okay.
These over here are required so that this building lines up with the cook store, cook shop next door. And we will be applying for those variances with the zoning board. I think they're very small, and they should be, good chance they'll be granted. One of the main benefits of this is that there will be a unified and cross-access process. You may recall that when the Bridgehampton Inn was before you, one of your requirements was that we grant a future cross-access or agreement to grant a cross-access in the future, and that's what we'll do. So the entrance is from Montalk Highway. It will be one-way in, and one of the things we did was, proposing to do, is to narrow this entrance so it's not really susceptible to two-way traffic to people coming out. And also, the parking that we've put over here, and this was Claire's suggestion, is on an angle, again, to emphasize that it's a one-way way in and make it difficult to come out. So it's one-way in, and then the cross-access will come through here and out onto Butter Lane. It will, and you could also enter through Butter Lane. That will eliminate the conflict point that was here, and there'd be no return onto the highway.
I see, I see. Can you go through the uses in the various buildings for us?
Sure. The main building will be a cafe, open only from the morning, 6:00 or 7:00 in the morning for breakfast through lunch and up to 5:00 PM.
For 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM?
Yes.
So no dinner?
Except for very early dinner.
Will it be takeout, like a to-go section, or is it a sit-down restaurant?
It's a sit-down restaurant. It's, we've designed it for 60 seats.
So your C of O will be a sit-down restaurant?
Yes.
And the second property is a single-family residence?
It's a single-family residence.
And where are the four apartments?
The four apartments are on the second floor above the cafe. They're the senior...
Those are the affordable housing units?
They're not affordable, but they're 55-plus. I mean, they're not, they don't come into the definition of affordable, but they're 55-plus, which has, the good things are, less kids.
And we were led to believe that they were affordable units.
They were going to be affordable senior?
No, they're regular, they're not affordable per se. I mean, they don't come into the definition.
The code requires that?
Yeah.
You're required by code. To put, they don't have to be affordable.
All right.
It helps?
No. No.
The intent of the HO is to encourage a mix of uses, residential with, with, you know, commercial uses that are compatible.
Yeah. Quote, smart planning.
It's a design-driven code.
Yeah.
But there will be four units, not two.
Four units, four units.
And where's the cooking school going and the different wellness meeting rooms?
I don't know of a wellness meeting room.
I was at a presentation yesterday at the Southampton Library, the Rogers Memorial Library.
All right.
Where the applicant talked about her plans in the past and for the future.
Right.
And I heard her say there were going to be two affordable senior apartments, and there was going to be a cooking school, and she was going to have, like, rental space for wellness groups to maybe have yoga. And it sort of sounded to me a little bit like a spur, but from a holistic standpoint, and those are my words, not hers. So I'm just trying to understand what I heard yesterday with the application right now.
Well, you have, excuse me, are you?
Okay.
All right.
No, no.
This is Sabilla Pump, who is the principal, right?
Yes, yes. I mean, we, she, we...
They were doing four affordable housing?
They're all, well, I apologize. So they're all going to be senior affordable housing.
Yeah.
That's over the cafe.
Yes.
Right. And what I spoke about yesterday at the event was part of a program that we've just started, which is a, we've revived our cooking school program at the Bridgehampton Inn. The Bridgehampton Inn was doing a Loews &amp; Fishes Cook Shop Cooking School. It's not an actual school. The school sounds like a really big operation. It's actually recreational classes for up to eight students. We're starting it in the restaurant in April, and it will be Monday nights for people coming in for classes, when the restaurant is closed.
None of those classes and the other things you talked about are in the new facilities?
Those are proposed ideas for fine weather situations, where we have been approached by customers who want to use the inn and open garden space for those kind of events. Yes. But not for, the residential is actually a home. There is an opportunity for me, as the homeowner, to do private classes in my home, if I like. But I'm not sure that that's something that I want to go forward with. We are going forward with classes on the nights that the restaurant is closed.
Yeah, I mean, if we're looking at a site plan, we need to understand uses and...
Sure.
Parking and all of that.
Sure. Yeah.
So the classes will be in your original restaurant, not in this restaurant?
Yes, in the restaurant kitchen, yes.
Okay.
Yes. On the nights when the restaurant's closed.
This may give you a better idea of the layout. This is the cafe.
Mm-hmm.
The seating is around here. The use of the kitchen area is right here. If there are classes in this part, they would be here. This is the second floor, and it's the four apartments. It's not a total final design, the architects say, you know, it's the, it's the basic design. There may be some...
Are there going to be elevators?
If they're seniors, I think there have to be. Or there should be, at least.
The answer is yes.
Mr. Bregman, could I ask, you have, you're going to have, in five residential uses and a wet use on that one parcel, do you have the flow? Have you run the numbers by the Health Department yet?
Um, we're in the process of making the application. As you can see on the, on the survey, it's going to be an IA system, not, not required, but they want, they're going to be doing an IA innovative system. The flow, one of the advantages of the senior apartments is that the flow requirement is slightly less than if it wasn't a senior apartment. So the answer is.
That's strange.
I guess the theory is that not as many kids or something. I'm not sure.
Those are one-bedroom apartments?
Pardon?
That go by square footage?
No, they go by apartments, but it's, it's 1.5 instead of 2 as the multiplier. So you get an advantage from that. So the answer is, we don't have the Health Department approval yet, but John Bruski is designing it. We've met with the, the Health Department. They were encouraging, and we will obviously have to get their approval.
But you've run, as an engineer, run the actual numbers, the flow?
Yes, yes.
And the parcel will support that flow, or do you have to bring in sewage credits?
Um, we may need, that's up in the air right now, but we're working on that. Also, in connection with the prior application, there was a, an increase in the flow allowable for the site, which still applies. So it went from about 380 gallons to 770, which was basically doubled. So that's the number we're working with, and that's the number that the Health Department is working.
Where did that come from?
When, there was a prior application for development of this property by a prior owner, as you remember it. And in connection with that, the Health Department granted that increase.
Well, that was offices. This was, it was not a wet use.
But it's, no, but it, we still have to meet that flow, whatever the use is, but the flow applies to the property, whatever's going on there.
Well, you know, if you have, if you're, for affordable units, if you're voluntarily making them affordable, the town will make sewage credits available to you.
Yes, and that's one of the things that we're discussing with the town and with the Health Department.
Okay.
So the answer is, we will come within the allowable flow for this property.
Okay, I'd just like to see some comparison between, what you're saying is there was a pre-existing flow approved, and you're picking that up. We've had difficulty with that in the past. I mean, there are two, it's apples and oranges, the two different applications, because this is a restaurant.
Well, as far as the Health Department is concerned, there are, you apply for and you can get relief in, for various, in various ways. Once you get that relief, it applies to the property. Now, you have to meet that. If you have a different use and, and the flow is more, you have to either get some credits as.
Well, for affordable, for affordable.
For affordable or.
But they have to be, you know.
Yes.
They have to be affordable units.
You know from the prior operation at the Bridgehampton Inn that they play completely by the book, so, yes, and they, they will have to do that. But that flow that was established, this is, as far as the Health Department is concerned, is, applies to the property, and you have to fit into that flow. Now, it also means you can't get further relief from them, right? So.
So can we talk about the, the house in the, the north?
Yep. Well, there are a couple of other things I wanted to mention. I did mention the septic, but one of them was the landscaping with respect to the north and protecting the trees on the property. But I can do that after your question, Madam Chairman, Chairman.
The parking, number of parking spaces here?
Yes, there are 33 parking spaces. The requirement would be 38. It would be possible to meet that 38, but it would be very detrimental to the design. Let me explain that a little bit, if I may. Two spaces were lost by making these parking spaces, two, just, I mean, just by, I think you saw it on the entrance, by making them angled. If they had been straightened out, there could have been two more. So that's two that were lost for good reason, I submit to you. It would also be possible to put parking up here by the entrance to the, there and alongside the back. Fourth of the cafe, there would be about six spaces. And the shared access cuts across here, in other words, the driveway comes up and cuts across here. If that shared access were not there.
You really have to use the microphone, because nobody's gonna hear you.
Sorry, they're killing me. All right. Move this up. It's so much easier, okay.
And talk.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you very much.
So, basically, you're, the people who are going to the cafe are gonna drive past the private residence and park in their backyard?
Yes, some here, some back there.
I see.
Right?
I see 20 back there.
Yes.
So that's third, two-thirds of the parking.
Right. So we would be asking for a reduction from 38 to 33 for the required spaces, and again, could pick those up by making changes. If the access wasn't there, there'd be five or six more spaces, I'm sorry, three or four more spaces there. And so you, and also, so you could make this work at 38. It would interfere with the design, and submit to, it's not necessary for a couple of reasons. One is that this is only working until the evening, so there'd be shared access, and then part of the, the access agreement would also be shared parking, so that when the, when the inn is working late at night, the, excuse me, the cafe will not be working, so they'll be shared there. There are also about 15 spaces along, along Butter Lane that are available, public parking, and some on Montalk Highway. So in real world, I don't think you need the extra five spaces. There's plenty available.
So from a, a flow standpoint, people will be parking along the north line.
Along here, yes.
And using a pedestrian walkway to either go into the guest house or into the cafe? Is that the plan?
Yes, yes.
That people will be on foot?
Is this a guest house?
It's a single-family residence. It's not part of the inn.
So it's, it's, it's a private residence?
Yes.
Assumed, assuming owned by someone else?
No. No, it'd be owned by the same people.
But wasn't there some reference to a B and B at some point?
That's one of the potential uses. The other is being used by them.
We're mentioning it.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it would, part of the requirement for the B and B is that the owner lived there, and that's the pumps, so it's.
Right. But because we had a work session on this, and we're just repeating those comments.
Well, we're trying to remember.
Right.
We remember them.
Yeah.
But it could be rented as a single-family home. It could, it could be used by the pumps. These are all the things they're considering. Or it could be used by the pumps and used as a B and B.
I think it's neat that you, that we have, like, a definitive plan of what's going to happen, because we kind of roam over the place right now.
So the parking spaces that are part of the existing restaurant now.
Right.
There are enough of those for that operation?
Yes.
Or will there be, they can accommodate a spillover?
Well, the idea is, is both. If there was.
Shared parking.
Yes, shared parking, so that the people coming to the cafe can park in these spaces if they're available, or along here, which are closer, so they might be used. But everybody can share all these together. But they're gonna be, essentially, the heavy use are at different times of the day, which is.
I'm, I'm still struggling with the uses.
Right.
Because we've, we've heard a lot of potential different ways that this property is going to be used, specifically now we're talking about this house. How it's used has an impact on parking. It has an impact on, on flow. So I, I.
Well.
Have a hard time saying that that's enough.
Well, actually, I'm sorry.
Or too much.
Actually, I don't think it.
It's already needed, it's been a plan of what's happening, then we can analyze, you know, what the house is gonna work.
Well.
We've got potential classes, but they're gonna be at a, when the restaurants close. There seems to be a lot of really interesting, good ideas, but what, what, what do we need to make a decision now, is my, my question.
We're only looking at the two buildings.
Yes, that's.
We're not looking at the restaurant with the classes. Am I correct? That's not in this application. That was a parthenical expression by the owner that she liked to do. So unless you want to make it part of the application, I don't think we should.
No, it's, I, I only knew about classes in the existing inn, so you're ahead of me. And that's where they have been, and they have been going on.
Am I off-base in saying that?
But, but the, the other thing in terms.
Understand how that's being used?
Yeah, well, this is pre-app, this is pre-application, so.
Okay, so we're.
It's at the very, it's at the very beginning stages.
You can't anticipate how it's being used, it's, you're representing it's a single-family residence.
That's right.
And all associated uses that a residence is entitled to, including a bed and breakfast, if they want to, just like you can turn your house into a bed and breakfast, you have to meet certain criteria.
Yes.
Or not.
Yes. And in terms of flow and parking, it's the same. Whether, whether it's a B and B or just, you know, a large family using the whole thing.
It's based on bedrooms?
Yes, all right.
And you're not merging these parcels, correct?
Pardon?
You're not gonna merge these parcels?
The, the inn and this, and the cafe, no.
So you're gonna have to execute significant reciprocal parking, shared parking, shared access?
Sure. As I said, we already have the, the future access. When, when the inn was developed, there is a recorded cross-access agreement where the inn agrees to give cross-access to the use on this property. So we now have to say, now that we do it.
Shared parking.
And we have to put that all together and share.
I mean, conceivably, in the future, this parcel could be sever, be under different ownership, different operation, but those shared arrangements would be permanent?
Yes, they'd be recorded, access and parking easements. Shared access, shared parking easements. They would, they would bind the property. One of the other things that I know you're interested in is preserving some big trees. This lot is now, unlike the meadow or the other property earlier today, really is a successional.
Yeah.
Woods, in effect. There are some large trees there. They are mostly along, well, first of all, there are a bunch of trees outside the property and the road right-of-way, which of course would stay. There are other large trees along, just on the, inside the boundary line, and most of those can be accommodated, and for the final application, we'll have a landscaping plan showing, preserving that. I mean, that's very important for everybody, including the owner and the use, you know, the development of the property.
And the parking along Butter Lane is?
Is public parking.
Public parking, because I, I would anticipate that people will park, run in, get something, and run back out. So there's going to be that type of action?
There might be. It's, it's not focused on, it's a sit-down restaurant. It's not, that doesn't mean you can go to sit out, you can go to Red Bar and get something to take out, but most of it will be in, you know, sit down inside.
Mm-hmm. Okay. That is pre-application, which I, I lost sight of.
Yeah, it's pre-app, so we're just, any other questions from us?
Yes, we, we will do a full landscape plan and, and I will run access and cross-access easements.
Parking regulations and all of that.
All right.
Right.
But we wanted to know that this basic plan was okay before we dove into that.
Well, it's okay. We don't even know what the plan is, so how can it be okay or not okay?
What is it that you're uncertain about?
Just in general, the whole plan. I mean. That's the plan right there. That's the plan. Restaurant and a single-family residence. Nothing more, nothing less.
That's it?
That's it.
That's it.
So do you like that?
As far as whether we like it, they're entitled to it under zoning. I happen to like it, but my opinion doesn't matter.
No doubt.
Well, the one thing that's very tricky to legislate are hours of operation.
Yes.
So when you say 6:00 to 5:00, in the perfect world, fine, but whether that's actually going to happen, so we have to anticipate some of that in terms of parking and, and use of the property, so.
Yes, and that's, and that's perfectly legitimate. What I was trying, I mean, of course, what I was trying to emphasize was that, A, it could, we could make up the five extra spots, but it would really impinge on the design and the flow of the property. One of the major items here is this rock garden, which you can see.
No seating in that rock garden? It's just decorative?
It'll be sculpture. There's, there may be.
Seating?
Not seating per se. There may be people sitting on the porch here, looking over it. It's not designed as a place to eat or sit and use a property. It's designed as an open space. So if that's one of the conditions, that's fine, because that's the purpose. You can see through it. It's an open space in that area.
What's the occupancy of the cafe?
We've designed it for 60.
60 people?
60 people at table, or at the counters combined.
You're saying 16 or 60?
Six, zero.
Six, zero. Is there anything else, Mr. Blaney, that I can help you with?
Well, there will, I mean, there are a lot of details.
I know we are. I know, I'm sorry.
I mean, you know, you're gonna have another medical office there. I mean, I think it's a great, it's a great use. It's, it's tastefully designed. It encourages, encourages foot traffic. It fits into the dynamic of downtown Bridgehampton. There's tons of street parking. I mean, sometimes, you know, you go to, you know, you go to Almond or wherever, and you're parking down by the candy kitchen or whatever.
All right.
You're walking up back and forth. It's, I wouldn't get bogged down in the parking.
Has the Bridgehampton CAC seen this at all? Have you been to the Bridgehampton?
We haven't made a presentation to them, but they know about it, is my understanding.
Yeah, it'd be good to give a presentation to them. Are there no questions, further questions on the board? Anyone else like to speak to this application?
30 days.
Thank you, Eric.
Thanks.
Pre-app, it's a 30-day written comment period. Motion?
Motion closed. 30 days.
Yeah. My Dennis and second by Gloria, 30-day written comment period. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, five in favor, two absent.
Yeah. Okay.
Excuse me, do you want copies of that survey and file for this?
Yeah, Anthony.
Sure. Okay, thanks.
It's pretty. No, I'm gonna take this.
Oh, hold on.
And these are the sheets. They need these. They need these.
I'm not reading it, or you read it, I don't know.
Yeah. Okay, number four, Noyah Golf Club.
Madam Chair, we do not have proper mailing, and that will have to be re-noticed, both posted and mailed. Our planning staff is recommending a new public hearing for April 9th, if that's amenable to the board.
April 9th, sure. So if you, people who are here for that, it wasn't properly noticed?
Well, in the past, are we allowed to take any comment?
We can take comment, can't we?
I have no jurisdiction to allow you to open it in order to take comment.
Oh, so we can't even open it?
We can't. Can we bring some things to the board's attention, or would that be?
Well, there's no jurisdiction. If it can't be opened, we can't accept any public. I'm so sorry.
The new hearing date's gonna be April 9th.
I would recommend that the board.
May we ask some procedural questions?
Sure.
In terms of just how to, I thought your proposal with the Bridgehampton CAC was a great one. Is it appropriate that we have not had any contact with the golf course management? We only saw, the signs went up on the property a couple weeks back, and then the, and then the mailing was received by some of the residents in the area.
The mailing, to be clear, I apologize. The mailing was received by every single person except for Suffolk County, and unfortunately, it's enough to not allow it to proceed. So I do believe all the neighbors got notified, but unfortunately.
No, my sister didn't get, my sister did not get the notification. I shall only get your board's attention because I was on the block. And I don't believe Andrew got any notification as well.
If he was required. If he was required to get notification, my understanding from planning staff is that forty-four out of forty-five received?
Yeah, whatever the number was.
Yeah, so I don't know. Only adjacent parcels receive? There's not a, there's not a radius?
Right, on the golf course, we're very, very familiar. But just, anyway, I'm not, I'm not so much concerned about that. I just would like your guidance really this evening in terms of, is it reasonable for the golf course management? And I don't know who's in charge of the golf course anymore. Because as you may recall, this has been a fairly...
Okay, we're not going to get into the detail of it. But if you want to reach out, your CAC group wants to reach out to the applicant, of course they can.
They're not required to. They're not required to interact.
Do, do we know who the applicant is? I mean, I wouldn't even know who to contact. Is there someone who's made the...
Yes, absolutely. Tony Panza, you can go review the planning file in the planning department. That's subject to review.
And that's the appropriate person to contact, is the person who submitted?
Yes.
Come see me tomorrow, and I'll give you whatever information.
Per file.
Okay. Thank you.
Or would you like to make a motion for that, to set that public hearing?
I'll move to, so we schedule to April ninth?
Yes, April ninth. So we'll reschedule Noyah Golf Club till April ninth. Second By Zuccarelli, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, extensions, five in favor, two absent. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Dennis, Second By Gloria, all in favor? Posed, extensions, five in favor, two absent.